... items. And for the Executive Committee's work plan at some point, sooner rather than later, if we could change our rules so that we don't have to read every word of these for introduction, and we can do like the legislature does, first and last sentence, here goes. High school science instructional materials adoption came before CNI April 23rd and April 30th for
Consideration.
Approval of this item would accept the recommendation of the high school instructional materials adoption committee for instructional materials for all students taking ninth grade chemistry A, Chem A, ninth grade physics A, Phys A, 10th grade biology A, Bio A, 10th grade biology B, Bio B, and 11th grade physics B, Phys B. And authorize the superintendent to purchase carbon time as the core instructional materials for the Seattle Public Schools high school biology A, Bio A, science classrooms, to approve the district developed curriculum for Bio B as the core instructional materials for Seattle Public Schools high school biology B, Bio B, science classrooms, to approve the district developed curriculum for Chem A as the core instructional materials for Seattle Public Schools high school chemistry A, Chem A, science classrooms, and to purchase peer as the core instructional materials for Seattle Public Schools high school physics A and B, Phys A and B, science classrooms for an amount not to exceed $1,034,132, covering licensing through school years 2019-20 through 2027-28. Note, a minor edit on 5/14, May 14th. Intro and date, intro and action dates updated on the board action report to reflect correct meeting dates. And let me just say, as a point of privilege, whatever happens with science adoption from the board votes, this board absolutely fundamentally respects all the work that has been done to date. Some of the frustrations about how this was teed up, certainly lessons learned in the past, and certainly our current superintendent, our current chief academic officer were not here when some of those missteps may have been made. And there's a certain science teacher in the room, I believe still, who made an impactful and incredible difference in my child's life, who will graduate in exactly a month to a science career that is phenomenal because of that mentorship, because of pointing out opportunities, and was one of the folks that helped develop this curriculum, and I am beyond grateful. Chief Academic Officer Diane Debacker, take it away, please.
Thank you, President Harris, and you have teed up this bar very nicely. Thank you for doing that. As you've seen in the bar, as you heard from the work session that we held about a month ago, and the committee of a whole a few weeks ago, you know that this high school bar is one that has a blended approach to the curriculum, and that is approving or recommending carbon time, district-developed, teacher-developed, Seattle Public School teacher-developed curriculum, and then peer. So you've already read over those and you've seen those. But before I pause to give you time to ask questions, I'd just like to, to say a few introductory words that you'll only have to hear once tonight. You will not have to hear it in the middle school bar or the elementary bar, because we use the same process and all. But I want to take you back in time just a little bit. You heard it from some of the speakers who were here tonight, is that it has been anywhere from 18 years to 24 years since Seattle Public Schools has had a science adoption. And I think that's important to remember. Whenever we have that much of a lag of time between an adoption and what we're doing, we find that materials are out of date, we find that much has changed in our world, and certainly much has changed around science. So I will take you to 2013. And in 2013, it's when the state of Washington adopted the next generation science standards. And I'd have to say that based upon my experience doing curriculum adoptions at a district level and at a state level in other locations, that if we made, we, and I mean it collectively as Seattle Public Schools, had a misstep in this process at all, is that we were not quicker to respond to new state standards with our curriculum adoption process. Typically, when you are looking at a new curriculum in any school district, it is triggered, or there's a lever that triggers that, being new state standards, being new standards maybe that are across the United States as we saw with the Common Core standards. And typically, a district will then come in behind that in probably less than a year's time and say, "We need to at least review what we're doing." We didn't do that in Seattle Public Schools. We're not pointing the blame at anybody for doing that or not doing it, but as we move forward, because there will be another adoption process at some point, right? There'll be an adoption process with social studies, or another English language arts, or another science round, we just need to be quicker to respond to the lever that would do that for us. And in this case, it was 2013, and it was the next generation science standards being adopted by the state. So let's acknowledge that and say that we'll, we'll do better in the next time that we're faced with that. As you know, with the process, we followed policy 2015 in order to do this. You heard at the committee of a whole when Director Geary asked Kathleen Vasquez to talk about how this was done in the English language arts adoption and the different steps that we went through. The same thing happened with science. I'll take you through those stages very, very quickly, just to help you remember that. So it began in April of last year with the board approving that we could then review science standards, or review what we do in science. Started there, it was then a call to the community saying, "Does anybody want to be on these adoption committees?" We had 90 people respond, over 90 people respond. We accepted everybody, I believe, I will, I'm checking for clarification, everybody that said that they wanted to be a part of it. From that, the committee then set the review criteria into how they wanted to look at the different possibilities of vendors that may come in. From that, an RFP was developed, and from that, the RFP was sent out to vendors saying, "Please respond to what we're looking for." Proposals came in, the committee met, they reviewed those proposals against the criteria, and then from that point on, we then put those out and looked at which ones would go out into our schools in a field test. And so that field test happened, you have that in the science bar as to which different, the three or the ones that went out to be reviewed. Then it came back, and we looked at those field test results, we looked at pre and post tests from students, observations from teacher observations, we had community inputs. There were two opportunities for community members to review these materials on a Saturday in the beautiful city of Seattle. And then they were online and available to review as well. Then the committee came together and made a final decision as to which, which ones to put forth. That is the same process, very abbreviated as I'm describing it, that matches policy 2015. It is the same process that we have used with other curriculum adoptions. That is why we are here today, bringing this recommendation to you. I'm very proud of the work that the committee has done with this. As you all know, I stepped into this process about three-fourths of the way in, so I had to catch up very quickly, and I will admit that there were times that I weren't, I was not as caught up as I should have been. Director Burke and I have had a few discussions about that, so thank you for your patience. But as I look at the process and how it was applied against our two policy 2015, the process was followed. It was thorough, it was exhaustive, as, as you've heard and as you've seen. And as you know, we don't have to remind you that this, this is one of your great opportunities and privileges that you have is approving a district curriculum. I think what you have in front of you tonight with the high school proposal is, is very innovative. It is looking at what's out there, carbon time and our district-developed, our Seattle Public School-developed curriculum. Those are free, those are open resources, they're online, so you can see the cost of that, as President, President Harris mentioned, with this particular cost, this is the lowest cost of any of the three adoptions that we're bringing forth to you tonight. And so we're, we're looking at, looking at how we can do this in a different way than what we've done before. So I think that is enough comments from me. I think probably through your questions, we'll be able to answer those. I will acknowledge that sitting here with me and standing beside me tonight, we have people who know this much better than me. We have Mary Margaret Welch, our program manager for science, and Dr. Kyle Kenosha, who has led this, through it, the entire process. So with that, President Harris?
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues, please. Director Burke.
So, I appreciate we're starting with high school and working our way down, because I think this may come as a surprise, given maybe I've, it has had the appearance that I have been overly critical of the process K-12, but I really have very discreet feelings about each group, the high school, the middle school, and the elementary. And I'm actually really excited about where we're going in high school. You know, I, I was maybe a little skeptical around technology in K-5. By the time you get to high school, it's not just, you know, the, the use of technology is pretty ubiquitous, and the students that don't have access to it are, we place them at a disadvantage. And so I'm actually, as I indicated, excited about this. We're working towards a one-to-one computer model in high school, which could allow students to have their own laptops. I believe that's coming through CNI, I think even now. And so I think that that implementation is going to have, or implementation is going to have some, some farther-reaching ramifications. High school science is going to be shifting as a result of that, and I believe that that's appropriate. So my ask is that, within the high school work, that we're really intentional about our feedback loops because of that. Because we're, we're looking at teacher-created materials, we're looking at blended learning, we're looking at, you know, the, the technology components, that we take that very intentional look and continue to report back to the board, because I think that is actually, yeah, I just think it's going to be exciting.
Director Geary, then Director Mack.
I still remain a little fuzzy in terms of what will actually, what we are prepared to purchase, and I'll ask it on each one, so that we're clear. Should this one be passed? Are we prepared to purchase it, and for which grades will it be purchased? Which schools will get the benefit of this curriculum exactly?
All high schools will get the benefit of this curriculum, so all 9th through 12s.
And what about the highly capables that have 7th and 8th grade will get 9th and 10th grade curriculum? So they will all have that as well, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, okay.
And specific to the cost, and I should have mentioned that in, in my introductory remarks, the costs that you see in front of you are, at least for the ones that are open resources, so the carbon time and our teacher-developed ones, the cost apply to bringing them to be ADA compliant, and we had, you, you mentioned that before in, in previous comments. It is to maintain the website, and then it is for our professional development, because we will need to have professional development alongside this. You heard one of the speakers tonight talk about the success of CCC has largely been due to that we've had professional development walking alongside these teachers all along. There is a cost also for peer, for that particular one, but the bulk of the cost has to do with us just maintaining our system so that teachers can access this curriculum.
So next, will it be available to teachers starting this coming fall?
Mary Margaret has said yes.
Mack.
I said in my comments earlier that my undergrad was environmental and social system studies, and I also did, early on, a internship with the Center for Eco-Literacy, which was an organization focused on learning about ecology and the importance of doing that in nature. So I come from a perspective of being thoughtful around our use of technology. I, I believe that we need to be using technology effectively, and it's important, but I do have concerns about the possibility of overusing it. And I appreciate your acknowledgement of the part of the process where we didn't start the adoption process really when we, we should have many years ago, and that there's a lot of gaps that got filled in during that time because of that. And everyone, I mean, we, we do this with our funding situation as well, so this is, you know, it's understandable, we end up filling gaps, and, you know, people are trying to do the best and bring along the curriculum, because we need curriculum for our students, and so that is, that's something that's very clear to me. And going forward, what I also, as a board director, have realized that we don't have a policy that lays out what our perspective is of technology use in schools. We don't have a statement of, "We don't want kids sitting in front of screens all day." We, we don't have those guiding principles stated anywhere yet. We had the online policy, which we just repealed, that had something related to that, but we don't actually have a policy that lays out this, you know, our perspective as a board and a district, how we want to move forward with technology. And technology is just moving so quickly, we're just kind of on a train, and, and this is something I think we need to be thoughtful about. So I know that there's a digital learning policy that's coming forward, and I think that'll be helpful. But I also would like to suggest that we, we should focus a little bit more on actually developing a technology policy, and what, what do we, what do we want to actually be doing as we go forward? Because this, this adoption process is going to, if we select these curriculum, we are, we are investing in and committing to substantial computer outlays, one-to-one at, at high school, and potentially lower down in the grades, and the clarification on to what extent in the, the lower grades we, we want to use computers in our classrooms, or what limitations we want to have on it. We, we haven't defined that, and so one of the other pieces of the 2015 that was followed but, but wasn't adopted is there's a statement that the board can adopt guiding principles for each adoption process. And that was something that we didn't do, we didn't actually do guiding principles. It's, it's the last line in the policy, and 2015 is really long. It's the very last line in that policy, that we can adopt guiding principles. It doesn't say you have to, so it didn't happen, and so we didn't start the adoption process for all of these with guiding principles from the board to clarify additional things that we may have wanted to help clarify for guidance. And for me, particularly around technology, I think some clarification might have been helpful at the onset of the process, because now we're having those thoughtful conversations about how much technology, and there's differing opinions on whether or not the materials in front of us are too much technology or, or not. But we as a board didn't, we didn't set guiding principles at the beginning of the process, and so in our revision around 2015, I think that's something that I would prefer that we say we will, just like we do in the facilities planning, we, in the levy planning, we set guiding principles. And I think going forward in other adoption processes, that will help us hopefully reduce some of the, the challenging situations we've got going today with this adoption and the, and how, how divisive it's gotten. So I just wanted to make those statements about those policy things and, and the acknowledgement of that, as well as, you know, recognize that this, we, in particular with high school, this is going to commit us to one-to-one computers going forward. And we haven't had that comprehensive discussion, and we have a technology plan that has been created, but the board wasn't, we, other than with the BECS planning, we didn't have, we haven't had those conversations. So I just feel like we should have some of those thoughtful conversations around those commitments going forward.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Pankow.
Can I just get some clarification? You do list the costs, say, in the ADA compliance website maintenance and professional development. Will there any be a need for students or teachers to print out materials, and how much cost may that add to this?
There will be printing costs, but we have not put a figure to that.
So if we can estimate if a class of size of 30 students are taking Bio A and, again, again, how much printing cost is that going to be? Because I know it can get pretty expensive as, and if it, we don't have that ability to print out maybe a copy of the readings or whatever the open resource is, students would have to rely on the material online, but then, you know, again, just the concerns about then going home. Ooh, I don't have that ability to download the stuff, especially when you look at internet speed for a lot of students. Oh, yeah, it takes me three hours to download this textbook, whereas someone else it's another place, it may only take a few, a little bit shorter time. So that's other kind of costs I'm concerned about. We have the ADA compliance website maintenance, but printing costs, I'd like to see some kind of estimate on that?
So noted.
And to follow up on that particular piece, where are those costs budgeted from? Are they coming out of the high school MSOC's budget, which is already, as we know, as lean as lean gets? Or does that get billed back to the district with, with one of these copy machines where you punch in the code like we have back in the boardroom, so that our line item budgeting actually reflects what we are in fact spending?
The printing cost, if I am correct, are at the building level. And, yes, those costs are at the building level.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Patu, then Director Burke.
I guess my question is, how is this material actually going to affect the different learning styles of our students?
Well, they have, I'm going to go first with my answer around the ones that have been developed by our, by our own Seattle Public School teachers. And so they are the ones who have actually been using this curriculum and developing this curriculum as they've gone along with the diverse student body that we have in Seattle Public Schools. And so there's a variety of, of activities, from hands-on to, to working in groups, so what you would expect to see in a classroom in Seattle Public Schools, and adjusted for that particular audience.
Can I do a follow-up? So what is the comment from students? Is there any response from the students, or in terms of when they were using this material?
Mary Margaret? Yeah, it's, it's in, we will find that for you, and we'll get that to you. It is in one of the attachments that we discussed at the committee of a whole, and we had about a zillion attachments, so we will find that for you and send that to you directly.
Thank you.
Burke.
The, the question around cost and professional development came up. On this one versus some of the other ones, the costs for professional development are fairly lean, it looks like it relates to .4 FTE curriculum specialist. Are there any, you know, what is the, what does that mean in terms of professional development for the actual educators, and is there a cost component for that? Where is that covered?
Mary Margaret? I think this is definitely in your wheelhouse. So with regard to the professional development, you'll see that it's in the bar under each of the components. So traditionally, what we've done for professional development is there's a week-long summer institute with three follow-up days during the school year, and so those are sub-days for during the school year. So what we did is we calculated them on $250 a day for the sub-costs, reminding you also that the number of teachers at the elementary school is far greater than the number of teachers at the high school, and so that's why you see the huge divergence of cost.
May I follow up on that question? Is this professional development required of our teachers?
So the question is an important one to me, as well as to you, and I have to tell you that when I was presenting at the high school LLD meeting, the ed director specifically told the principals that when the curriculum is adopted, it would be expected that all teachers would not only use it, but would be developed proficiently in terms of that. And as you know, and I don't have this particular data in the bar, so I'll have to tell you this from memory, 85% of our biology teachers already participate in professional development, and 78% of our physics and chemistry teachers participate in professional development. Also to remind you that we're going to a three, a third year of science, and so we need to bring on board some of those teachers that have not been to the table at this point, because they haven't been teaching freshmen and sophomores. So now our professional development will expand, expand into those arenas. So we did the calculations based on our best numbers that we have for all of our high schools and numbers of teachers in chemistry, physics, and biology.
Okay, I, I want to be really clear here. Expected to take professional development does not mean required to take professional development. Is that correct?
So as I think Kishel Toner explained to you during the committee of the whole, that is a negotiation component with SEA, so that is bargaining, and so, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Kyle Kenosha, Executive Director, Curriculum Assessment Instruction. I will point out that in our implementation of CCC, all teachers were required, whether it was a summer online training, if they didn't get it then, then they were required to do it when they came back to school using sub-release days.
Dr. Clover Cod, Chief of Human Resources.
Thank you, just because I know what's in the contract on this item, teachers can be required to take up to 24 hours of mandatory professional development that's district-directed. We do have to pay them, obviously, for their time, or for the subs.
As well we should.
But we can mandate up to 24 hours per year.
And that's under the current contract, and we are currently starting to negotiate on the next contract. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
A couple other answers to questions. So Director Patu, you will find that information that you'd asked for in attachment I, specifically I point two and I point four. So if you look at the bar specifically for high school and look at attachment I, you will find the data. And then the other questions that came in with regard to printing costs, currently our teachers do have a lot of printing that's done, because they've been developing their own instructional materials. So they're creating all of this. So actually, I would tell you that in my best estimation, and we will get you the figures, but in my best estimation, those printing costs will actually go down, because we will be more, we will be more conserving of those resources. And because also, the digital platform does give students access to reading materials, and not all children would need to have printed materials. Last, last point that I think is important, there seems to be some confusion about the technology that's required. These are not tech-based courses, none of them. Thank you.
I have another question. When you teed this up, you did not talk about the waivers that came for When you teed this up, you did not talk about the waivers that came forth a year before we started the adoption process. And I can remember painfully well, sitting in some of those meetings at CNI and in three-by-threes, I think Dr. Konosha will remember those as well, where some of us found the waiver and the lack of communication about how this came to be. And, and I think we need to acknowledge that and our lack of communication. I, I don't want to look backwards, but, but I do want to create an appropriate and authentic waiver, excuse me, record about the waivers.
There were no waivers for high school, so if we can hold that to middle school, maybe? Is that okay? Okay. Also, good, I'm glad we made that deal. So, I know I still have to deal with that deal, but I want to also go back to Director Mack's question about any policies around technology. Chief Information Officer or Technology Officer Kroll has provided that Policy 2022 does state that the board also believes that students need to be proficient users of information, media, and technology to succeed in a digital world. It goes on, but we can reference and look back at how 2022 crosswalks with that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate bringing that up because actually it was brought up in public testimony. However, what we haven't pulled apart is what that means in practice. And I, I think part of that for me is because what I mean by the reliance on technology is a little, a tech-based curriculum is maybe not the same thing as what other people are thinking. The fact that this is on the computer and it requires a computer to access it unless somebody prints it out means it's tech-based to me. Because you have to be, you have to have a computer to get there. So that is maybe different than the, than other perceptions around tech-based. But the requirement that in order to access the curriculum, the materials, you have to use technology to get there makes it tech-based for me. So I just want to clarify that, that, that that's part of where some of the conversations for me get a little disconnected because I fundamentally believe that we need to be using technology appropriately and teaching our students technology. We need to be teaching students to, to type earlier on because they're, they're using those computers early on in, in, you know, fourth grade. We also need to teach how to use Excel appropriately. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, actually, not being able to use Excel well is one of my pet peeves as a former consultant. And, and so, so my point is not that, not that we don't have some policies and we don't have some statements, but I don't think we've actually been clear enough about how we want to move forward and what it means. The current technology plan actually has a lot of that information in it, but it's not a board policy. So I would like to see us kind of tying the information that's in the, the technology plan into a board policy so we can get clarification moving forward on what we mean.
And we do need to keep in mind that the state of Washington does have the ed tech standards that we have to also pay attention to.
Do we need to adopt?
So, yes, that will be part of our further discussion if...
So the, so there's ed tech standards that are relatively new in the last couple of years, given your comments just a bit ago about, you know, new standards start in adoption process. Is there an adoption process that we'll be needing to start to that or it's, it's not something that's going to be required or we don't know?
It is not on our current curriculum and instruction plan.
Director Pinkham and then Director Burke.
Yeah, and I'm going to go back to the chart again that lists out the year one through year nine costs and the years four through nine are clumped together. Why is there no cost for everything but Bio-A? What, what are we paying for in that years four through nine?
You guys need to wiggle up there a little bit.
Because I'm not sure if we're just making payments over nine years for Bio-A, but only over three years for the other four, nine years. So I'm just curious what that extra cost in years four through nine for Bio-A is.
I don't have an answer for you right now. But Mary Margaret does, is that okay with you?
Yeah, Diane has it here. So the professional development is the bulk of the cost for Bio-A and we are offering three years of professional development to implement the program. So then the further, the years other than that, we aren't, we're not budgeting anything in there because we will already have the resources and the professional development will have been completed. So the years four through nine for Bio-A would be mostly about web updates and we're trying to put all of the assessment tools online as well. So we have...
Don't we have teacher turnover though in nine years? So how could they be zero in years five through nine? Help me understand that, please.
It's not that there won't be any professional development, but it won't be within the context of this bar. So that will be our responsibility to take that on. If you want me to, yeah, go ahead, Diane.
It'd be as it is currently. As we bring any new teacher on, we have to provide professional development in whatever area they're teaching, whatever grade they're teaching. So it would be as we normally bring a new teacher on and, and get them up to speed. Go ahead.
Okay. So then following up then with some of this other curriculum that says it'll also include upgrades and updates. So after that year three, they're, the providers are still committed to provide us updates at no cost?
Yes. And keep in mind that the bulk of those providers, SEAS, Seattle Public Schools.
So are, are, were and are our teachers being paid an hourly wage for A, being on the adoption committees and B, developing this curriculum, high school curriculum? So there would then in fact be a cost for updating curriculum if we are paying teachers an hourly wage like we should be. So, so how can that be zero?
So some of those upgrades are specifically upon us that are curriculum and instruction folks. So having curriculum people, high school curriculum specialists, that would be their assignment to update that. In terms of development, development takes a lot of hours. It takes a lot of teachers. So while we're in development, absolutely, teachers are paid. They're paid during the summer. Clover can help me with the exact amounts. And then the adoption committee, it's very specific in the board policy that they're paid $17.92 an hour. So during the adoption committee process, that was their fee. And, but during the development of instructional materials, especially summer costs, then those summer costs are miserable to whatever the particular CBA calls for.
Director Burke and then Director Mack.
I, I just wanted to share though, because I always have to bucketize things, the conversation we've had around the ed tech or technology-based programs or, you know, that the language there without clarity and without specificity can create some misunderstandings. And so I just also wanted to, you know, my interpretation is that there are, there are kind of three key areas where one is that the technology is an information channel. So this is like digital materials or online materials, you accessing a PDF or accessing something that requires a computer or using a computer for web research. So that is like an information channel. The middle one, technology as a teacher, is the one that I'm obviously the most concerned about because I feel that that's a place where adaptive technology could be trying to muscle in and, you know, bust up our relationships and the expertise of our teachers. And then the third one that I'm the most excited about is technology as a tool, where we're using, we're learning typing, Excel, SolidWorks, programming, you know, we're using the computer as a thing to build our learning on top of. So if that's a grouping that, you know, I think that some of that is actually captured in the ed tech standards. But I think the more we can be clear about what our technology uses are in the programs, the better we can prevent misunderstandings.
Director Mack?
I really appreciate that because the way you laid that out actually helps clarify, I think, part of the conversation that's so challenging around this. Because of the, the fear, I would agree, is using technology as the teacher. And that, that is the part that we, you know, want to avoid doing. And that technology as a tool is actually really, really powerful in our schools. And so having structures in place to make sure that that's what we're doing instead of the other would be helpful. And so thank you, Director Burke, for clarifying that. My question was actually going to ping off President Harris's questions around the PD and my, my curiosity is around how many high school curriculum specialists we fund across the district? And is that an ongoing commitment that is in the budget and it's district-wide? And how many are there? There was a public speaker earlier that mentioned at the adoption time many years ago, there was, you know, five of them or something?
Eight.
So we have eight at this point?
No, there were eight.
There were eight. And how many are there now?
Well, two point, two point six.
You weren't speaking into the mic.
Two point six.
Two point six.
We also have teacher leaders who are also serving in curriculum specialist positions. So we, we have a teacher, we have two teacher leaders who are building teachers full-time, not full-time, part-time. Kim Din, as Director Harris pointed out, actually serves as a curriculum specialist point two. And so that's part of her assignment. So she helps with that work. And then I have two curriculum specialists, one from Roosevelt and one from Hamilton Middle School, who are serving as a point two as well. So when we added, added all of those components in, it's bigger than two point six, but people who are here in JSC in the building, we have two point six. Actually, two point eight. I'm mistaken, correct? Yes, two point eight.
And this may seem redundant, but I don't know that it's ever been put on the record. The legislature removed the science testing for 11th grade as a requirement for graduation. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that was one of the drivers, that and the NGSS standards for bringing this curriculum up. Is that correct?
In all three, yes, yes, it, it was. And so because of what was signed into law last week, that has changed. No longer is passing the high school science assessment a requirement for graduation.
But successful through your science.
Yeah, the graduation, yes, successful, yes. Taking science classes required, but not passing the test.
Gotcha. Director Burke? And then if we could move on to middle school, science adoption next.
Since, since you went there, thank you for that. And maybe this is a topic for a Friday memo because it's not immediately relevant to this, but does that passage and the no longer needing to take the assessment at a particular time in the year, does that adjust our sequencing? How we talked about the courses and we were splitting some of them up that had some concern. Do, do schools have more flexibility now in how they stage things for their master schedules?
We have not had those discussions yet. If, again, I keep stating that, that, that bill was just signed into law last week. We are still receiving guidance from OSPI. We did send in last week's Friday memo a brief summary of what $15.99 means, but we have not had those discussions. The assessment committee meets actually tomorrow night. I, I have to split myself and be in two different places tomorrow night. That may or may not be a discussion topic. Again, we, we're kind of moving at the pace that we're seeing OSPI. We're not trying to get out in front of something, making decisions about something that later may, we just, we need to be patient as we move through this, this new environment around assessment.
And did the legislature give us any money to implement any of this?
Chief Financial Officer Joel Lindberg is not here tonight to answer that question.
If we could put that in a Friday memo feedback loop, much appreciated. Director Mack, please.
I appreciate the question around $15.99 and the impact because the, part of the challenge here and why we went down this road of splitting, you know, Chem A, Chem B and realigning was because of the timing of the test, as I understand it. Now we don't have that timing of the test and that there's, there are other districts that have chosen not to do that.
Okay. There appears to be disagreement from the science program manager that will have to take up at a different time, perhaps in a Friday memo.
Okay. So the, but the, the lead-in to my actual question is relevant to all the rest of these bars as well is there are, there's some unknown in my mind about how effective this curriculum will be. And so I just want clarification on the, the timeline that we're committing to it. And then do we have any midpoint checkpoints at which we are checking in on whether or not is actually being effective towards the standards and we're, and to reevaluate that?
Well, I, I heard two questions within the, within what you said. And, and one was how do we know if it's going to be effective? The critical point here is that there must be alignment between what we're teaching and the standards that have been presented to us being the NGSS standards. So if we have a tight alignment, which we believe we do, with all of the bars that we're bringing forth to you tonight, we believe that that will get the results that, that we're looking for. So it looks like Kyle has stepped up here beside me and has, feels that this is important that he add to this.
I wanted to point out that with our two adoptions, CCC and Envision Math, we've been working with research and evaluation generally in a three-year study of the trajectory of these. And included in that study is, you know, a look at how student achievement is affected. And so, you know, we developed pretty much a protocol to actually do that now that will apply to pretty much any adoption.
Excellent point.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I am going to go there. We've asked research and evaluation to take a look at honors for all and we still have yet to see any look back on a potential course correction, but yet we've been promised that. So if it's not part of the bar, how do we, how do we embed that?
I am going, I'm not sure if I'm going to answer it as to what you're expecting. So you can, we'll see where I go with it. What we, what we know is that any time that we start a new adoption, whether it be English Language Arts, Social Studies, or Science, we have learned that we need to bring research right along with us. So instead of waiting for nine years when we're done with this or when we go to a new adoption, we know that we need to have that research walking alongside with us to help us gather that data so that we can tell the story along the way. And so I, that is, that's what we're doing. There's a couple of things that have happened just even operationally to make that a little bit easier for us at Seattle Public Schools. Research and evaluation was moved to teaching and learning, to the teaching and learning division. So there is a direct connection between what we're doing in this whole curriculum world and our research and evaluation team being right beside us. And we, we, we're seeing that to be so valuable. So I'm not sure if that answers the question.
It helps.
In terms of the HC, and here I'm, I'm, I will, I don't know if, if Wyatt is still in the room. He has left. But you do have a task force going on right now, an advanced learning task force. Those results or those findings will be brought to you in, in the, in the fall. And I believe that topic will be addressed there, but I'm not sure. So I am speaking as to, I'm not quite sure if that answers your question or if I've just overcommitted us.
It helps. And, and I wonder whether a check-in after three years and a look back on growth rates, disaggregated data in terms of socioeconomic, students of color. disaggregated data in terms of socioeconomic, students of color, Title I schools, would be an appropriate add to all three curriculum adoption bars. Again, I, we've spent a lot of time on this board looking backwards, unintended consequences, and I want to look forward. I want to, I want to develop that trust and systems to where it's part of our identity. So I wonder whether thought could be had from the good folks in this building as to whether such an amendment would be brought forth, say by staff, between now and action.
We, the reason that I am pausing and maybe even looking a bit puzzled is that I would consider that to be part of what we normally do.
And I wish that I could agree with you, but unfortunately, knowing the history here and the bandwidth issues, curriculum and instruction, curriculum adoptions used to be the first things cut straight off the top. In years past in this district, evaluation, scientific research and evaluation, such as we have such good people doing here in the district, wasn't funded. So if it's not in a bar, what is Director DeWolff's phrase?
Mentionable.
If it's mentionable, it's manageable. And one of the things, when I eventually leave this dais, that I want to leave is, is a better system for those folks that will be sitting up on the dais six, eight, 10, 12 years from now. It will be clear and, and the collaboration, we don't, we don't have to argue about what happened in the past. It'll be set forth.
Yeah. I, I, as, as your chief academic officer, we will be doing that research and that evaluation and that continuous feedback loop to us and to you all along the way. The adoption of this curriculum is really, the easy part will be the adoption. The hard part is implementing. That's where the real, real work begins, and that's where we'll start to gather data. So for me, I just, that will be part of what we do. Whether it needs to be in a bar or not, I will, I will, I will.
Obviously something I'm sure that you and the superintendent and the small cabinet will discuss. Director Burke?
Director Harris, may I answer your question before we go to Director Burke?
Please.
I, I think it's really important for you to understand that without common instructional materials across the district, we actually haven't had common assessments. Without common assessments, we can't really show you growth across the district because we're not expecting teachers to give assessments and we're not evaluating those and looking at those. So indeed, we have our high stakes assessment and our new WACAS, which is one piece of it. This is our first year. And so looking in three years at only the WACAS, I think would be short sighted. I think what's really important is that it's our opportunity with new instructional materials that actually have embedded assessments, which we have never had before, common assessments across our district, then we can start having those kinds of discussions and answering those kinds of questions about the effectiveness of the instructional materials, but also to help guide our instruction so that when we see different schools having different outcomes, it gives us opportunity to share successes and make modifications on behalf of our learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Burke?
Precisely to your question and whether something should be in the bar, there is a bullet in the bar in the implementation section 12 that says, June 2020, the Science Department will conduct an evaluation of the first year implementation of the adopted instructional materials, including an analysis of student growth, data, and teacher-student community input and feedback. So I think while the three-year isn't there, the one-year is there, and it would provide an opportunity to extend or adapt.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, questions, concerns, let's move on to middle school science instructional materials adoption, which came before CNI April 23rd and April 30th for
Consideration.
approval of this item would accept the recommendation in the Middle School Science Instructional Materials Adoption Committee for instructional materials for all middle school science classrooms and grades six through eight, and authorize the superintendent to purchase Amplify Science as the core instructional materials for all grades six, eight, Seattle Public Schools science classrooms for an amount not to exceed $2,69,686, covering licensing from school year 2019-20 to 2027-28, in an amount not to exceed $565,857 for in-house professional development and collaboration in a 1.0 FTE curriculum specialist. Note, minor edits were made May 14. Intro and action dates updated on the Board Action Report to reflect correct meeting dates. Take it away, CIO Debacker.
Thank you very much. You again have set us up to have, not set us up, but you have teed this up in order for us to have some great discussions. So let's talk a little bit about the middle school proposal that you have in front of you. As you've looked at the bar, you obviously know that Amplify Science came in, came through the process ahead of the other two, other two options at every stage of our process. This included our teachers, our students, who provided input, and our community. The most critical step was that final deliberation as we looked at stage one, from where the criteria was set way back in the beginning, to how we then sent out and looked at which vendors would actually get to be in our classrooms, to be field tested, to the field testing, to the student surveys, to the pre and the post, and everything that I've described as we talked about high school. In terms of the technology, because that issue has been brought up many, many times as to whether or not it's too reliant on the technology, in this particular one, technology is only present in about 15% of the lessons throughout the entire year. So I think we need to keep that in mind. The, the schools where this was taught, the engagement was high, the interest was high. You've heard that from some of the students who have visited with you today. It was exciting to see some of those middle school students who were here in front of us today. The, the issue of the waivers, I think I'll just address those right now because it was asked. There were indeed waivers that, that schools asked for in order to look at Amplify. And so I'm going to bring you back again to not having an updated, we did have an approved science curriculum, there's no doubt, but it was 18 years old in this particular grade span. And when you have an out-of-date curriculum such as that, when you have materials that you simply can't even receive anymore from publishers, and when you have a new set of standards that don't match what we currently have, then you have teachers who are very bright, teachers who know what other districts are doing, teachers who know that there is a new set of standards out there, and they say, we can do better. We can do better than what we have been presented 18 years ago. And we believe that if we take something for a test drive, think of it, taking it for a test drive, we want to take it out, we want to kick the tires a little bit, see how it works, that's exactly what a waiver process is. We allow that within our district. It is allowed within what we do. It, not every middle school wanted to do the waiver, so we have some that did and some that did not. It is, we created this ourselves, and we have to take, all of us, again, collectively have to take ownership of this. We, we want to do right by our students, our teachers wanted to do right by their students, be able to meet those next-generation science standards, and knew that there was something else available in order to get that done, and that was Amplify. Those waivers were done, and we, we knew that those waivers were happening.
Did the board know those waivers were happening in 2016 and 17?
I do believe the board did know that they were happening.
I'd like some follow-up on that at a later time, please. That's a terribly important question. And again, I will appreciate that you were not here and that Superintendent Juno was not here at the time.
Oh, excuse me, Kyle.
This was just about the time that I was beginning to come on board. So what I will say is, yes, the board did need to have better communication around that. I think everyone agrees that, including both the board and staff. We did report on these because we have an annual waiver report around December in which reported on the number of waivers. I am not going to say that that was adequate by any stretch because what should happen is that, you know, as Dr. Debacker pointed out, as we begin to respond to new standards and to try and meet those needs, we should have much more upfront communication with the board, you know, all along. That is something that we hope to write into a new draft of 2015 to require that, that at least a year after the adoption of new standards by the state or district, that our department actually do a report in terms of how it's going to respond. And, you know, as we have now, John, we have more, much more routine reports in terms of what's happening. So I think that your statements about looking forward are appropriate. We need to learn, you know, how we can actually work better as a board and district team.
Thank you for that. My next question would be, if for whatever reason Amplify Middle School Science does not pass as the accepted curriculum, wouldn't the waivers as they currently stand continue forth for another year? So the bottom will not necessarily fall out from where we are now. We are not starting over again necessarily in most of the schools with 18, 20-year curriculum. Is that, is that a fair recap?
Waivers are good for three years, and yes, there's one year left on the waivers.
Okay. Thank you for that. Please, go ahead, Superintendent Juno, thank you.
I would just, I think when an adoption happens, there's so much more that comes with it than just at a waiver process. You get the consistent, common stuff. You get the common assessments that Mary Margaret talked about that you get to build upon, so you get measurements, and you get common professional development that we can then require science teachers and teachers to take a professional development. And so an adoption comes with so much more. Otherwise, yes, we're piecemealing it together. Yes, that piecemeal will continue. Some will do it, some won't. But when we're aiming, you know, I think back to Eden, it's like, are we creating scientists and engineers? It's like, well, we're not right now because we don't have common curriculum. And until teachers know how to teach a common curriculum, which will come with the adoption, we're going to be in a woeful spot still piecemealing it together. And so, yes, the waivers would continue for one more year. We'd probably be looking forward to what's going to be next, but when the board adopts it, it adds in so much more common kinds of things. And the most important thing it adds is the money to do the professional development.
Director Geary, please.
One of the things, and I think Ronald Boy, you spoke to this some time ago when I asked, that in terms of the field testing, what, how would the district know whether or not those being asked to rate it weren't being affected by their familiarity? And as I recall, Ronald Boy, you provided some explanation around that in terms of what steps the district had done in the curriculum and instruction meeting. But that is a concern, that if you have people who have been working under a waiver, and then they're asked to test run or field test versus people who haven't worked under a waiver, there would be a bias potentially. So how is that scientifically adjusted in the numbers that were provided?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at Ronald, see if he wants to respond. Because I don't recall that specific exchange during CNI, so you don't have to.
It was, it was a long time ago. I brought it up, and I was given an explanation.
BD before Diane.
I think that Ronald Boy, I think my recollection of that question was that, that yes, like it could create a bias. However, with anything like this, it could create a bias for or a bias against. Once someone has had the opportunity to really delve into materials that on the surface look great, once they get into them, they can either find out that they are in fact great, or they can find out that they're bad. And in this situation, because we've continued, our teachers have continued to like working with the materials, it shows that, yeah, there is a bias for because the evidence that they, you know, found from working with them, like, proved to them that they, they liked the materials. So that's my, my opinion on it. And I think that be the same case in any materials adoption, you know, we're not going to be expected to, wouldn't be sensible to exclude the previously adopted, you know, publisher of materials just because we'd used them in the past because they potentially would have a favorable review of our, of our teachers. We just, we're looking for the best and the most favorable, you know, instructional materials for our teachers, and that's what we should go with.
Yeah, and I think there's a couple other things. The, the field test is just one of the criteria, so there's other criterias that are, that is also taken into consideration. So that may partially answer that. And then we did have a couple other vendors that we were looking at at the time that were currently being used in some of our schools. So, and I asked this question of Kathleen Vasquez, as she looked at both English Language Arts and Social Studies. And I said, has it ever been, when we have gone through previous adoption processes, have we ever had a vendor who was already in our schools that they were also a candidate? And the answer is yes. And so, and kind of in this whole curriculum world, and when you especially think about it in terms of next-generation science standards, there are not, the field isn't real large because those standards were just developed, you know, six years ago. So it's taken a while for publishers to get up to speed. So it's not unusual for us to have something already being used within our classrooms that then also becomes a possible contender.
There's no prohibition of using previously waived in terms of curriculum adoption?
Correct.
Director Mack, Director Burke?
I have two questions. The first is Ms. Mary Margaret Welsh said that there's only 15% technology, and when we're talking about Amplify, we're talking just middle school right now. I want to actually disentangle the two. Only 15% technology, but all of the materials are online. You need a computer to access it, right? We don't have books that we're giving students. Just, just for clarification of what we're talking about, because it's a digital curriculum that you go onto the site, you log in, you open up, you click on things, you read an article, you see a picture, you maybe do a simulation, but it's all online and not something in hand unless someone prints it out.
There are no textbooks. There, there are the Bender kits that are used, but there are no textbooks.
And there are, there are?
There are no textbooks in our 20, 2002 adoption either. We haven't been using textbooks. So teachers have had online resources or file cabinet resources, as I kind of explained a couple of years ago. When I first started teaching, we made mimeographs, and we had them in file cabinets, and that's how we pulled our instructional materials together frequently. And so truly.
I remember the old mimeograph.
I'm ancient, so there you have it. But the truth of the matter is, is that we don't have books, textbooks, in, in our instructional materials, in our current adoption of 2002. materials, in our current adoption of 2002 either. And so, teachers have to access current relevant instructional materials, and I think that's what we want them to do. And so, indeed, will the teachers themselves need a computer to access the resources? Yes.
The, the students do as well, though, to log into their account, correct?
But what, what we're saying is that, just like now, sometimes kids will do a laboratory investigation, and they don't need a computer for that at all. The teachers give them a lab, and they have them execute the lab. Sometimes kids have readings, and just like we've always done in the past, we, we copy the readings and we hand them to students, and they use them. And they don't need a computer for that. The teacher used the computer to access the resources.
And this is actually, this is actually the conversation that I feel is important to have about the disentangling of to what extent that's necessary and to have access to the materials, how that happens, whether or not the teacher's using it, whether or not you're sitting in front of a screen. So I think that clarification's really helpful. The second part to my question, though, is around the materials that are provided by Amplify. You said they're kits. Are we purchasing those? And what exactly does that mean?
So currently, we have a kit-based system as well. And if you've ever had the, have an interest, I'd be happy to take you to the Science Materials Center, which is a huge warehouse that has enormous kits. And we house all of them. And a kit is basically a big tote, plastic tote. And inside the plastic tote are all the stuff that teachers need. So, for example, if I were to do an investigation on enzymes, then inside of this tote, I'd find, I'd find the enzymes, I'd find the hot plates, I'd find places to make ice water baths, all the things, the stuff that I need to carry into my laboratory to be able to do those, execute those investigations with kits. We have done that since night, well, since the eighties. We've had kits, and we've had opportunities. Ever since we've started talking more about hands-on science, we've always had kits. And that's what a kit is, is basically a box with all the stuff inside of it that the teacher would need to execute the investigations.
So last clarification on the kits, how many kits per week or lesson or, how many kits per week or per lesson?
So...
So how frequently do they get an actual hands-on kit thing to do as part of the curriculum?
I think we're talking about two really different things. So a kit has instructional materials, and so it depends on the unit, how many times. But generally, students have a hands-on experience at least once a week where they use instructional materials to execute them. Did I answer your question? It's, I think it's difficult because I think it's so much a part of who I am because this is how I've always done science. So, so I, I don't think I'm being very clear, but essentially, Diane's going to...
I think I can assist. So, a, a unit that covers a particular topic could last anywhere from five classroom days to 10 to 15. So the, the unit itself, the kit, would contain everything to teach that unit. And depending on what that unit is, it could be a week long, it could be two weeks long, it could be three weeks long.
I know I go into the weeds a little bit, but I'd actually like clarification on that because I looked into my daughter's units, and I think there's six of them for the entire year, as I understand it. But I, but I don't know. So I'd like clarification on...
At a later time, please clarify, Director Burke. Thank you.
There's been a lot that's gone by, so I'll try to, I'll try to focus here. I think, so in my mind, it's, you know, it's, it's an undeniable fact that Amplify Science is currently in use in the majority of our middle schools. I think we've talked about that enough to say, yes, it's there. I also believe that that does provide a clear advantage in any adoption process, and it's, it's almost impossible to decouple that. But we don't want to discourage innovation. We don't want to tell people, oh, don't pilot that because we might want to adopt it someday. You know, that's backwards thinking. Don't test that out because that would disqualify it from using in the future. So it is a delicate dance. And, but fortunately, we have some policy guidance around that in Policy 2020. And so for, for my friend, the policy wonk, and for anybody else who cares, it states, "When the district begins a process to adopt new instructional materials pursuant to Policy 2015, staff participating in the adoption process should evaluate the school-level data for the subject up for adoption of all schools with the relevant grades. The purpose of the school-level data evaluation is to learn how our students are doing with the materials that are currently in use, whether basic instructional materials or waiver materials. This information will give the adoption team a grounding in what is currently in use and how it is working." So the intent is, we, we don't penalize programs for being piloted or being waivered or being, happening to be in schools. We give them the opportunity to demonstrate their efficacy. So really, that's what, you know, I talked about the three different mindsets that I have for the, the different curricula or the different adoption areas. And for middle school, there's really two core questions in my mind. You know, I've been speaking with, with Diane Debacker about this. The first one is it closing gaps for our students. We have, because we have Amplify in our schools, we should have a way to say, yes, it's working. We should be able to say, this investment that has been made, whether through waiver, whether through donation, whatever method, put that one in the, on the back burner or the, the parking lot, whatever method got it here, is it delivering for our kids? You know, because we can't put budget towards things that are not improving things for our kids. So some way of comparing the, the schools that are using Amplify with the schools that aren't. And I know that that data is, you know, has been requested and is being processed. And then the second question is, okay, if this, if it demonstrates improvement for students and we adopt it, what message is that sending to publishers and our district culture? And so I believe that second question, that's for the adults. That's for us to deal with. That shouldn't impact whether we do or don't. That should determine how we manage ourselves. But the first question is about the kids. Is it helping the kids? And that really feels to me like it needs to be answered. And so I, that's why, you know, I'm trying to understand, well, what is the measure? Because the assessments are varying, and there's, you know, there's, there's, it's tough to put a growth measure when you have varying assessments. But this is science, and, you know, the work that's being done, you know, in conjunction with the experts at the University of Washington, you know, this is, this is a premier research university. We should have the brightest minds working on this and being able to tease out that data. So, and, and help us understand what it looks like. Is it a standardized test? Is it a component of things? Is it a performance task? But I think the information that we've seen so far has been heavily focused on using the Amplify assessments to measure the Amplify tool. And so that, that's a little bit of a point of concern for me. I really want to end on a positive note on, on this sort of comment stream, and that is to go back to my, my learning walk at Denny. Because they did use kits, they did use technology as a very small component, and the materials that they used from Amplify were almost all printed, that were handed out by the teachers, so the kids were taking notes on them and using them as, you know, a, a reference that they could look at and flip over, and they could go to this other thing. So that was a, something that, it felt very dynamic. I saw three amazing educators that, that, you know, kind of blew my mind with their craft. But what they've done, and this is, this is what we inherit when we do waivers, is Amplify has been taken, internalized, they've built their own additional materials to fill the gaps, to adapt to their populations, and they've built their practices on top of that. So the instructional material, the supplements and kind of implementation things, instructional practices are now interrelated, and it creates, you know, this really difficult thing to say, oh, should we or shouldn't we use this foundation?
I'm going to ping off of what you just said, and you and I have had some of these conversations as we push assumptions back and forth. And I have to tell you, I value my colleagues for, for that back and forth, and yes, but what about, what about? Denny, as we saw tonight in the consent calendar, has been the beneficiary of Ness Home dollars for quite some time, and, and money talks. We've talked a lot, both in work sessions, et cetera, about equity and common curriculum and how that matters. Here's another piece, and on the outside world, when folks are writing to us, they talk about the fact that Hamilton Middle School sent a lot of folks down for professional development in California from a national science conference. Sorry, thank you, appreciate. They also try and keep me out of trouble to the extent that they can. Thank you. Okay, so in, in talking with folks, and, and that's how we learn, what about that PTSA extra funding? Folks that go out and buy the kits that other schools, if we pass this bar, won't be able to afford? And when Schmitz Park, then Genesee Hill, applied for their waiver, they asked their PTSA, raise the paddle. Anybody that's been to a school PTSA auction remembers raise the paddle. This is what we're raising it for this year. They spent thirty, thirty-two six on those kits. And that also talks about equity and PTSA funding and enhancement. And if we don't buy the kits, aren't we asking for unlevel funding? How, how is that in fact common curriculum if some schools, again, are being backfilled with PTSA funds? It's a very troubling slippery slope. Everybody wants to do right by their students and by their particular school. But if we're not buying the kits, then isn't that vacuum going to be filled by wealthy PTSAs?
I think there's a, a distinction that needs to be made when we, we gave two pricing options, and I, is, that may be what you're referring to. When we say we would provide our own vendor kits, we believe that we have enough within our Science Materials Center to build our own kits.
Then why are PTSAs buying Amplify kits?
So you're talking specifically about Genesee Hill and...
And Hamilton, and if there's two, I'll put real money I don't have on the fact that there's probably 15.
So Hamilton did not purchase instructional materials for science. The instructional materials to do their waiver came from our Science Instructional Materials Center, and they, so their, their PTA did not purchase it.
But they paid for their entire science department to go to PD in California at a national conference?
They, no, that's actually incorrect. They paid, because I actually was at the conference, and I spoke at the conference.
Please.
So they, the entire Hamilton Science Department went to the National Science Teacher Association Conference. That's not a PD conference. That's a conference where teachers go, and, and of course, you're developed professionally, but essentially at the conference, you listen to speakers, you learn about current trends in terms of your field, you learn about pedagogical shifts, and you have an opportunity to hone your craft by listening to experts and learning about that. And that's why they went. They didn't go to get professional development on Amplify Science at all. They went to learn about what was going on in science. In fact, it gave them an opportunity to see all of the things that were going on in science from a lot of different potentially vendors, but also research scientists as well. So that's what happened there, with Genesee Hill reminding us that we hadn't had an adoption since 1994, five? And because of that, those parents were like, we've got to do something for our kids, and we want to update and do something different.
And, and I appreciate that, and I also appreciate that parents want to support their schools. That's inherent, but it also is a very slippery slope in terms of enhancement.
Agreed.
And I'm concerned about that.
I'm concerned as well, and that's why we came forward with an adoption, because we believe the adoption would offer us this common instructional materials across our district. And we have a way, and we have a procedure on how to stock those kits and how to make sure that in our elementary, as you see, it's a three-year rollout, that there's an opportunity for us to learn from past practices and deliver instructional materials. But this time, the instructional materials are current and relevant and appropriate for our students, and they're aligned, most importantly, to our new standards. So the adoption takes away that inequity by giving everybody a common platform.
Will we be prohibiting PTSAs then from supplementing kits from Amplify?
I sure would like so.
And I would just say, I think that is a whole different policy conversation than the adoption of, I mean, your PTSAs buy all kinds of stuff, science included, and so that is a conversation for the board to pick up, different than whether you're going to, whether you're going to adopt a science curriculum. And so, it's a whole side question, but yes, recognized. I just think it's not pertinent to this exact adoption and, and the questions that are in order. And there are extra money, I mean, we, you guys just approved some additional funds flowing to other schools for certain uses in your consent agenda today. Ness Home, really, I don't think has much to do with science in that, in those schools. And then, you know, we talk a lot about things being in place, and Amplify was in place in some middle schools, and so all those questions, I think, are good ones to ask whether that is absolutely, you know, if that sort of was just the linchpin that helped people decide, you know? Whether it is or not, it was still decided through all kinds of different measures that this was the best one going forward. I think when Dr. Mia Williams came forward at the work session, she said, this is the floor, right? This is, we need a common floor upon which to stand on, in this district, and this kind of adoption helps us. So that process, yes, but also a lot of other thoughts went into it. And I sort of liken that whole waiver issue to the incumbency of an elected official, right? You're in the seat, voters get to decide, they know you, they, they decide, and so it's the same kind of situation with us as well.
Director Geary, thank you.
I have some questions about what happens. Should this not be adopted? I know, I have some background understanding in terms of all the work that went into the alignment around the high school when adoption was not really queued up. Was there similar district-wide alignment going on for middle school standards? And where would we be in that process in terms of a district-created product?
I'm not sure I understand the very last part of your question about the district-created product, but...
Well, just as in high school, we've discussed how there was internally-made, online file cabinets. And we have now, middle school, with people using different of our proposed curriculums. So where would we be if, in a year from now, all the waivers expire, we're left with? What?
We'll rebuild our old FOS and STC kits with the manuals that we did, we copied in our copy machines and put them in the kit boxes so that teachers could use them. So I want to also remind us that part of why this all happened with middle school is because we were the recipients of a Math Science Partnership Grant from OSPI that brought us together with our university partners, which who have collected some of the data that you're asking for. It's what I had referenced to Director Pinkham when we were in the committee of the whole. And during that process, what we actually did at the very beginning, the first year, is we took the old instructional materials, the FOS and STC kits, and we tried to repurpose them. We tried to give them a storyline. We tried to give the phenomena. We tried to use the instructional materials that we had. We spent one entire year of our MSP grant trying to repurpose...
We spent one entire year of our MSP grant trying to repurpose what we had in place. And we came to the reality, that wasn't cost efficient and we couldn't finish. We just didn't have the time. We didn't have, honestly, the expertise to be able to do that kind of work. So the next year, we looked and we actually used something called Insights, which was some online instructional materials that were being created by NGSS folks. And we looked at it and we tried that. And we tried really hard to see how it was different and what it looked like. And it fell short, too, because it was really, really in the early stages of adoption. But through science, our mistakes help us to learn the most about what we can do the next time. And so there was a group of teachers that were getting kind of frustrated. So we pulled together an alignment team. And we said to ourselves, well, what kinds of options do we have? We've been told by the district, Dan Gallagher specifically told me, never to use the word "adoption." It would not happen in my tenure. And he said that we would never have an adoption. And then the teachers were like, what are we going to do? And this alignment team came together for several meetings. They represented every one of our comprehensive middle schools and most of our K8s. And we thought and we learned and we listened and we researched. And that's when the teachers came up with this idea, could we get a waiver? Because we tried to repurpose, didn't work. We tried some online piecemeal components, didn't work. And so that's why we went for the waiver. So if we don't get this adoption, what we will have to do, because it's all we can do, is reconstitute our old FOSN STC kits and go back to something that is not aligned to standards. We will not be preparing our children for the 21st century in 2020.
Quick question while you're still at the dais. And again, hypothetical, I honestly don't know what I'm going to vote on. I'm still working this through and if I don't have a no, sir, by the time we're done, it'll be a miracle.
We can eat our tums together.
That's an all-or-nothing proposition. And I'm never comfortable with all-or-nothing propositions, because there always seems like there's room for creativity and collaboration on a continuum. So if the waiver hypothetically is still in effect, and that gives us an additional year potentially to revisit, I don't know. I'm asking.
So...
As opposed to all or nothing.
My understanding is that we start a new adoption committee. I think my colleague Jen Fox pointed out to you in 2010, when we failed an adoption for high school, what happened? And I have spent my entire time in Seattle Public Schools since I stepped in the door in 2011, trying to rebuild trust with teachers and bring them back to the table to do this work again. And that's been really hard work. And that came from professional collaboration and trust building. And I'm afraid, because of past experiences, that if we deny our middle school teachers the opportunity, since they went through this entire adoption process, I'm afraid that they may not come back to the table.
Okay, hang on just a minute, because I'm going to go there again, because I want things on the table and transparent. There is a great deal of pushback in emails, et cetera, that say that teachers that don't agree with this pathway that we've chosen on adoptions have been sanctioned or are threatened with retribution if they speak their truth, which is not part of this adoption process. That is out there. I'm just going to put it right there on the table where it stinks.
Leslie, tonight, I actually saw several teachers and former teachers who stood at this dais and expressed that, and I didn't see any retribution, nor will there be from me.
I really appreciate this being on the table and being transparent, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, excuse me, Director Pinkham. And then if we could move on to elementary, it's a time check at nine PM.
Well, I got to keep on the camera with my new sports jacket as long as I can here. Everyone's commenting, Scott's wearing a sports jacket. What's going on tonight? It's because Penny's closed down at Northgate Mall. They're having a fantastic sale.
We missed the memo.
One of the people that came and commented provided an exhibit of the costs right now, which I assumed is the current cost for the waivers for schools. Called Exhibit A, it's, I don't know if anybody else, it's this handout. It's gone around to people out there as well. Just trying to understand, because just on this, it totals over $400,000. Was that paid out of the school's budget or did that come out of, what budget did that come out of?
We're looking at this document currently.
Can we answer that in the Friday memo? Because you guys are just getting it, so we'll figure that out.
Actually, and could I ask Acting Chief Counsel, Madam Boy to come to the podium to talk about the confusion of anonymous donors, Amplify, et cetera, and what we're doing about that, where we stand on the process and whether somebody at Amplify, whether someone at Amplify is going to swear under penalty of perjury that a chronology of the communications between Seattle Public Schools and Amplify and the costs thereof and the gifts thereof, and that there is no quote-unquote anonymous donor. Because as has been pointed out, there has been some significant miscommunication. Can you help me with that, please?
Yes. So to answer the last part of that question, as we're working with Amplify Science to obtain confirmation of the chronology and the information relating to the discussion about anonymous donor. In my investigation of the matter, it appears that it's, that the staff involved on both sides had a miscommunication and that on one side, we thought that the anonymous donor was still on the table. Amplify Science did not understand that, they concluded that anonymous donor was, that a donor was no longer needed. So the discussion fell out of the conversations and the assumption continued that we received the licenses as a result of a donation. So we are working with Amplify through our procurement department to obtain a statement affirming that understanding, my understanding is correct, and we'll also have confirmation of the value of the product received. And it's important to remember that in 2017, 18, there was product received that would be seen as a gift to the district. And at this point, all the evidence that I have shows that that's under $250,000. The next year, which would be the 18, 19, this year, the product was purchased by the district. And as a result, that's kind of a different lens to look through, but still under $250,000. So we'll hopefully have all of the confirmation to you in the next couple of days, working with Amplify.
Director Mack, and then I'd like to move on to elementary curriculum adoption, please. And then Director Gary, please.
I just, I just actually would like full clarification. When we're talking about these invoices and things that were purchased and whether or not they fall under that amount that you're researching and you're going to be working on, and then there's this additional exhibit that came to us tonight, that does not include the additional computers that were required to be put into the middle school science classrooms, correct? So when we're counting up all of the money that was spent to access this curriculum, we're not including the computers that were needed in order to provide the curriculum in those classrooms?
I understand that computers were purchased and that...
Yes, in John Croll, Chief Information Officer. There was a bar that went before the board in fall of 2017. It went to introduction in November 15th, 2017, approved in December 2017. That included, there was two parts to that bar. There were computers for blended learning. So we had blended, a blended learning cohort that we provided computers to. And then we had the Amplify classrooms that we provided computer carts to.
Just to clarify, at that time, were we informed that those computers were necessary to implement the curriculum and that these were being purchased for that purpose?
Yes, yes. We had speakers come up and talk to the board. The same speaker, Emily Alaski, spoke to the board about the Amplify curriculum and how good it was and, oh, and Chris Carter as well.
It would have been one of my first votes, so.
There's clearly some concern that we are moving into an Amplify contract that will, that we're obligated to move into and that we're going to be assuming, or maybe embedded within that contract, we'll be paying back some of this money. I believe it would be very helpful to us to get a clear statement from Amplify that is of this point, we owe them nothing, so that would be actionable. And that it would be interesting to see for districts that have purchased Amplify, what their cost is, so that we know we're having an apples-to-apples competitive bid for what we're receiving. I think that's going to be the only way to put to rest that we are not somehow buying, paying them back. Because this could be their tax accounting for the purposes of developing an on, you know, the ongoing relationship apparently is something that they do to adjust what they're creating. And so they would have ways of quantifying that and valuing that for their purposes as well. So it's impossible to know why this has been created, for what purpose. And all I want to make sure is that we, as a district, are not being told we've paid, not paid this, but, and that we're not going to be obligated at any point. So those are the two things that I think, a statement from Amplify, we owe them nothing, and two comparisons, so we know it's not being folded in.
Assistant Chief Counsel, you got that? Sweet. Okay, we are moving on, folks, and this is a time check. It is 9:10. Elementary school science instructional materials adoption, CNI, April 23rd and 30th, for... Approval of this item would accept the recommendation of the Elementary School Science Instructional Materials Adoption Committee for instructional materials for all elementary school science classrooms in grades K through 5. Authorize the superintendent to purchase Amplify Science as the core instructional material for all grade K through 5 Seattle Public School classrooms for an amount not to exceed $2,368,870 in a three-year phased-in purchase and implementation plan out of the F, the fiscal year 2020, meaning 2019-20 budget, fiscal year 2021, meaning 2020-21, and fiscal year 2022, meaning 2021-22 budgets, covering licensing through school years 2019-20 through 2027-28, and an amount not to exceed $5,406,74 for in-house professional development and collaboration. Attachment J has been updated and tracked changes on May 13th, minor edits on May 14th. Intro and action dates were updated on the Board Action Report to reflect current, correct meeting dates. Take it away, CAO Debacker.
Thank you, President Harris. The bar details a rigorous, a rigorous process with the elementary committee. We maintain that as with the middle school recommendation, the most critical step was the final step, and that was the deliberation of the committee. And the committee found that Amplify best represented the standards. The committee, after looking at the totality of the evidence, found that both HMH and TCI had a much weaker connection to the next-generation science standards. This was so decisive that the committee did not recommend the next highest program, which was HMH, to move forward as a second choice. With that, I think it's enough to set the stage for discussion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Who would like to go first? Want to be out of here by 9:30, folks, max, if not before. Well, I'm just kind of forecasting you where we're going here. It's a time check. I'm not subtle. Why start now? Director Pinkham, please.
Okay, for this one, because in elementary, you're typically with just one teacher throughout the day. And then when you hit middle school, you start going to, you go to your science class, you go to these other classes. So for here, I think that online kind of perception that's been going out there kind of really hit home for me a bit more. So, but is this still the same now for elementary, that online is 15% of the, what is it for here?
For K1 in Amplify Science, there's zero for students. No online. For 2 through 5, if the student is online, they would be online only with a partner and obviously under the direction of the teacher. And Christine, help me with the percent. 10%.
And then most of this bar shows professional development, which is actually almost two and a half times the amount of the curriculum. And how many, were there any waivers? There weren't any waivers for the elementary science, right? They were still using our current...
So the answer is yes, there were some waivers for elementary science as well. And the, most of those waivers that happened, happened because we opened brand-new schools and the outdated instructional materials that we were currently using could not be purchased. So the schools, instead of trying to make those kits at the SMC and copy materials and put them in the box, the schools asked that they would try a waiver to also investigate instructional materials. And I really want to say something important about professional development. And I know Director Harris is on exactly the same page that I am. First of all, it became incredibly apparent to me during the adoption process how little we have done with our elementary teachers. That's not okay. Even though we have 1,450 elementary teachers who teach science, we still are obliged to helping them to learn science. My staff was too small. We tried to do a launch to learn a little bit, to help a few teachers. We only helped 400 teachers. That's not okay. And when we do this, we have to do it well, and that's the cost of professional development.
So the elementary schools that had waivers, that were brand-new schools, I'm actually thinking back, and Cascadia was one of them. One of the questions that we asked before was the scope and sequence around highly capable and whether or not it's two grade levels ahead. Can you clarify whether or not Cascadia? First question, did we get, are we asking for the same data for elementary waiver schools as has been requested for middle school on outcome and how well this is working? That's first question. And second question is, for the HCP schools that were opened, are they doing the sequence of two grade levels ahead or were they, were they not?
So the answer to your first question with regard to the data, I agree with all of you about the fact that we need to be collecting data to understand the effectiveness of any program. And once again, I'd like to point out, we have never had common assessments, so we haven't been able to do that. The WAcast is at grade five. That's way too long to wait to see how kids are doing in science. So we're going to have to rely on some instructional materials that have embedded in them assessments, which was one of our five review criteria. which was one of our five review criteria. So yes, that's the answer. And with regard to the HC pathway for elementary and science, we're under discussion with those principals to make that determination. Because they had brand-new instructional materials, we didn't do anything that was two years ahead, we didn't put them in the middle school kits, which is, I think what you're asking, is if grades four and five use middle school instructional materials, they did not.
Director Burke?
First question, super kind of granular, and although we're already past it, I'll just mirror the question for the middle school, because it's the same, the same detail. The budget amount that is listed in the bar, you know, in this case is $2,368,870, and for the middle school is $2,69,686. I, I am unable to trace that amount into the vendor materials. I think there's a lot of confusion around, what are we buying for that amount? What is print? What is license? What is teacher? What is student? What is kit? And I think the vendor materials, you know, are, are 70 to 100 pages, that includes a real, very comprehensive itemized cost, but the quantities are, are in some cases kind of crossed out and edited. In some cases, the dollar amounts are zero. So being able to understand what is the breakout of this estimated budget amount, I think would be super helpful for us and for the public.
One of the things that came in the committee of the whole when we asked about the PD, looks like a really big number, but when you break it out by nine years, by however many teachers, it comes out to $400 per teacher for nine years. Frankly, I find that embarrassing. Just, just saying, my comment on the record, embarrassing and not doing right by our teachers. And, and just like curriculum came off the top for so very, very many years previously, professional development and budgeting for that and living our values, yada, 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 hasn't happened. And, and the last thing I'm going to complain about on any of this is the professional development piece. Director Burke?
So then I guess it's up to me to complain about the professional development piece.
Have at it.
It's been said, I heard it said by another, a previous board director, that we don't make decisions, we make choices. And so the $5 million that is allocated to this professional development, with that as a budget consideration, will we still have professional development money to be able to do since time immemorial, professional development at that same level of commitment? And will we be able to do ethnic studies at that same level of commitment, recognizing the number of educators that we have to reach? I want, I don't want to have this conversation in isolation, as much as I love science and would love to build it from the ground up, we need to be thoughtful about the other things we've got coming.
With the budget negotiations around these adoptions, once these choices were made, we were able to pinpoint the actual costs of both the materials, as well as we were able to calculate the amount of professional development. So for elementary, we were always, even before our budget difficulty, going to have a three-year rollout. And that's because our science team is so small that wouldn't be able to do 1,400 teachers at once. So what we are doing, we, through sharpening the pencil, we determine that cost-wise, we would be able to do middle school, we would be able to do high school, and we would be able to do 12 of the elementaries and come within our budget, continue to have a budget, increased budget for since time immemorial, as well as continue the development of ethnic studies as well. So we have worked that into the $5 million that go over both this year and the next year.
Let me reflect back what I think, make sure I understand correctly, so 12 schools in elementary science, full implementation of STI, including professional development?
No, no, we're talking this, 12 schools for elementary science, but I'm pointing out that even with middle school, high school, and the 12 elementaries, we still have the same budget, we've actually increased the budget for STI over this year, and we still maintain the ethnic studies budget as it was.
Right, that, that's the, the next part of my question, 12 schools for elementary, which leaves sufficient budget to be able to do implementation of STI in an effective way per staff planning? And development of ethnic studies, but not full professional, the development of the ethnic studies curriculum, materials, but not professional development of staff?
I would say that for ethnic studies, we would be able to do a considerable amount of professional development, similar to science in that this is district-created, so therefore not as expensive, which will leave more funding to do professional development. Both planning for STI as well as ethnic studies is underway for next year.
And my, my last point of concern around it is that for the elementary and, I believe the middle, we're funding PD for the first three years. We, we as a board are not committing future boards to nine years of PD, not knowing fully what those budget landscapes are. I'm nervous about that, and would be interested in doing the three-year and making sure that that's an ongoing conversation.
What I thought I heard at the committee of the whole was that those funds would be set aside in escrow, so that we wouldn't have to deal with years four through nine, which, which frankly seems the most responsible to me when we make these commitments.
The reason for my concern is that I have, I have gotten a lot of feedback from educators about mixed quality of our professional development. And I'm reluctant to commit that much money without an intentional feedback loop that includes a budget reallocation.
So the board originally had committed before budget difficulties, $7 million for this year and five year, $5 million for the next four. The board will probably have to undergo conversations in terms of state funding and what that will allow us to do in future years. I have heard the board say very clearly and very definitely that curriculum is not going to be something that falls off the table.
Director Mack?
I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I have, for clarification, because I was having a hard time hearing it and understanding it. The PD for elementary schools is only for 12 elementaries, out of all of our elementaries. We have, I think, a total of 60 elementary and K8s. So we are suggesting to implement, what is that percentage? I mean, that, that is, that is a tiny fraction of our schools if we're only doing 12. And that's, that's concerning to me, that that expectation, if the PD is so critical and so important, that we're only doing?
Well, the original rollout plan went before our budget difficulty, was going to be 25 schools, you know, phased in over three years. Mary Margaret has apparently a revised number.
So a couple of things, Director Burke, you asked about the three-year commitment. To also remind us that for elementary school, because we have a three-year rollout, it really will be a five-year commitment. Because the first, the first rollout team goes year one, two, three, the second rollout team goes two, three, four, and then the third rollout team goes three, four, five. So it would be a five-year commitment. And so, Director Mack, to answer your question, the number of schools may be up to 20 schools, but we had originally anticipated 25 schools, and that would be a third, a third, a third. So what we have asked for is to have a chance to go forward with a certain cohort of schools, because we need to learn. We need to see if her, how our professional rolls out to Director Burke's specific concerns. We need to know that the professional development that we are executing is adequate, and it is doing the work that we need to do on behalf of our teachers. So what we've asked for is a very small cohort of teachers at schools to participate with us, so that we can partner with them and learn about the effectiveness of professional development. We have university partners who would, who have offered to help with that evaluation process, specifically about the effectiveness of professional development.
Okay, moving on. Amendment one, were you wishing to speak to this issue in particular, sir?
Yeah, so just one clarification that I need, as far as when we're looking at the comparison of the scoring of the different curriculum, and where Amplify would be higher and maybe HMH or the others are either significantly lower or maybe a little bit higher. How many of the schools that use Amplify, also had Amplify where it was previous, that were being questioned or getting, being surveyed?
In elementary?
Elementary or middle school, I think that kind of relates to both. What I'm trying to get at is that maybe the reason Amplify might have scored higher if it was a school that was already using it, so those teachers had experience with it versus HMH and the other curriculum being new to teachers and, so I'm trying to see if we did try to compare new curriculum to new curriculum versus?
So I'm looking at my team, because the answer is, I don't think it impacted at all at elementary school. We have 74 elementary schools, and we only had four schools that had Amplify Science in their, in their rooms. And Christine and my, Derek, yes, so the answer is, that was not, that was not a variable that was involved in this particular, zero of our waiver schools participated in the field test.
Okay, thank you.
We are moving on to Amendment one to Elementary School Science Instructional Materials Adoption, Directors Burke and Pinkham. Approval of this item would amend the proposed Elementary School Science Instructional Materials Adoption to adopt HMH science dimensions from Hooton, Houghton, Mifflin, Harcourt for all elementary school science classrooms. The makers of the motion like to speak, and then let's hear some staff response, please.
I, I will tee it up. So I want to start by putting it, you know, reading into the record, the second paragraph in, in Section 2 Purpose, that says, "This draft amendment is requested for inclusion in the Board Agenda on May 15th to provide additional visibility to staff and community and gather additional feedback prior to vote consideration on May 29th." I think it's driven by the, the, some of the concerns that have, that have been, that you've heard here around technology, some of it is trying to get more understanding around how the two, how the scoring process worked between the two programs, and part of it is also to put that out into the public, public space, so that folks understand what's going on. And, and honestly, with the Open Public Meetings Act, it's actually really challenging for directors to communicate about things. In some ways, this is a way to say, hey, colleagues, is this a thing that brings us together as a district? Because right now, there's a polarity around Amplify. And so the, the relevant question was, it looks, from all of the data that we were provided, and again, I'll back up just a little bit, one of the key component, one of the key tools of engineering is a weighted selection matrix, which is a tool that allows you to take a complex process, whether it's a physical process or a social process or whatever it is, a complex set of, of things and multiple people, and objectively apply a set of criteria to reach an outcome. So I was really excited to see, oh, this is a full, comprehensive, scored and weighted process. There is, you know, there's, there's no subjectivity in it. It is very thoughtfully laid out, but then going through the, the scoring, the one that was the highest scoring was not the recommendation. The other area that sort of created some, gave me pause a little bit, was when I attended the, the report out from the field trials, field trials, field tests, and the educators that were piloting, field trialing HMH were, it felt to me like unanimously ecstatic. They were overwhelmingly positive about the program, more so than the Amplify program. And then I saw in the scoring that it scored about 12 points higher. So when we think about something that has a higher, higher ranking by the committee based on the field trials and the community engagement, it feels like something that actually would be less polarizing, potentially cost less to implement, and have still that solid foundation, that floor that we're looking for. So that was the basis behind it. And then the conversations that I had with Director Pinkham around, you know, is, is there too much technology in this? Does it, you know, we, we want our kids to be developing their relationships and developing their social, emotional skills, interacting with their peers, their teachers. That's the genesis behind it.
Yeah, and when Director Burke and I were talking about this, that was my, again, that technology was really that, one of the things that was for me is, is how much is this, is technology? And you've been answering those questions for me now, but it still seems we got feedback from others that, no, this is too much technology for them as teachers, for those that were in favor of it. And that, that was just my concern, because I'd rather see elementary, there'll be more hands-on. As you said, it's 0%, great, if it's that. And then access to the curriculum, I'm not sure, again, at elementary level, how much, how many kids go home and log on, let me, let me log on and pull up the science curriculum that we just covered today. I, I don't think that happens too much, but as the grades get old, that's where, I guess, yeah, maybe there's some concern there. But mine was, yeah, let's minimize or even zero out the, in front of the screen time for science at the elementary level, so students are more interacting with others or one of the teachers. And it sounds like that's a possibility.
Heck?
You had to get clarification on the HMH, is it a digital curriculum? Is that how it's accessed?
Yes.
You have to log into it?
Yes.
But it's logged into by the teacher and they print things out? So this is, this is a point of clarification that I think is really, really critical that we get.
Right, and, and staff has, we've done a bit of research since we knew that this amendment was coming forward, and staff response is that HMH actually has a heavier technology component for students than Amplify. It, the, it requires every student to have a unique login, whereas in Amplify, it's a teacher that has the login, and it is priced per student license fee, whereas Amplify is priced per teacher. So the, the technology component appears to us to be more heavy or heavier in HMH than Amplify, and it also puts more of that technology use on the student rather than the teacher.
Thank you for that question for you. And I appreciate that the amendment came in. What day was it? Anyway, it was posted, we requested it be posted, and, and I think that we came to an agreement collaboratively that putting things out there heads up made a lot of sense, because that clarifies communication. When did we discover that HMH is more A, expensive, and B, is more heavily reliant on computers?
We, we, their, their bid was always higher, their initial bid was a higher bid. So, so that was, was not a mystery. But as we looked at knowing specifically that technology was going to be the focus of, of concerns from all, from most of the board, we delved into that a little bit deeper as we compared it against Amplify and truly against adults versus kids.
I just hope that we get to a point sooner rather than later, even understanding OPMA, that we have more nimble and more clear communication. that we have more nimble and more clear communication so we don't wait until 9:35 to find that out. John Croll, CIO.
Thank you. One thing I want to bring up is my team did the ADA qualifications for the three finalists, and the paperwork turned in by HMH said that they were not ADA compliant as required by the district.
And again, I would have liked to have known that the moment you found it out, not at 9:35 in alleged meeting. Director Burke, please.
I'm, I'm surprised to hear the heavy digital component, because the report out that I heard from the teachers, many of them were like, oh, we didn't get to computer-based stuff, I had thought. That was, maybe this is something I didn't interpret correctly.
So when we received the notice that this amendment was made at 5 o'clock on Friday night, and I happened to be in Michigan, because I have a mother who's passing, my team spent the entire day, Monday and Tuesday, trying to go back through into the review. It was not their responsibility to do that depth of review, that was already done by the committee, but they wanted to be able to come forward tonight and answer the questions that you had. So the work that they had accomplished in these last couple days to find out all of this information, they poured through the RFPs, they looked at all of the budget analysis, they looked at page after page of the instructional materials and have very specific, Kyle can talk to them more, very, very specific concerns about the HMH. Number one, and this did come up in this room when we did our final deliberations, in our estimations, HMH does not align to the NGSS standards. It's a retrofitted curricula. Its materials, it was, does not, Amplify was designed for NGSS, and HMH was retrofitted, and it does not have a phenomena base with a storyline, and that was the deliberation. So Director Burke, I want to very strictly point out to you, the way it, we did not do a complex matrix process. What we did is, I had a lot of professionals and a lot of community members who were trying to figure this out together. So what we really did is, there was another one that you said, you went back and forth and challenged each other. That's exactly what Director Harris said, that you do together, and that's what we did. We went back and forth and challenged each other. We said, oh, you see this, but I see this. Can you open up the resources and show us what you see? Can you talk to us more deliberately about that? One of our practices in NGSS is argumentation from evidence, and we practiced that practice very, very well, because we never had that data set that you pulled together to put into your amendment to the bar. We never looked at that data set. In fact, the community input, you actually pulled that data together in a way we had never done before. Our team never saw that matrix that you created. So perhaps we didn't do it as analytically, numerically, but I'm going to tell you, we followed the practices of back and forth deliberations and argumentation from evidence. And I'd also like to say that attending to children, social, emotional, gives them a chance to talk with one, one another and figure it out. And one of our practices is specifically to ask kids to talk collaboratively and learn together and uncover the evidence that they need to learn science, and that is social, emotional learning.
So just to complete the story around technology and the two curricula, you know, I joined in today to review what our science team had looked at, and actually looked at the curriculum myself, comparing two different units in fourth grade. What I found was that the HMH lessons engage students with digital devices on the average every day. It asks students to actually do things like explore things on the web. There is, you know, a big concern on our part to ask students to actually do that with no apparent limitations, other than the guidance of the teacher, could subject us to some risks and problems. In comparison, Mary Margaret said that there is no technology interaction K1. There is, by the way, in Amplify, or HMH, and the only involvement in elementary with digital devices that occurs in the upper grades would occur on the average one to two times a week. In the unit that I examined, I examined both fourth grade energy units. I actually couldn't find any technology interaction in Amplify. But furthermore, I'm told that if there was, all the Amplify digital activities are housed within Amplify's closed environment. So there is no, just simply going out in the web and, you know, doing some research, which is a feature that HMH actually has. We looked at it and figured out if we were constructed to strip out all the technology in HMH, pretty much all that would be left would be reduced to reading text, filling in workbook blanks, and some hands-on activities, of which we found that the hands-on activities were a stronger component of Amplify than HMH. So that's what we've actually looked at before. Policy 2015 says that the curriculum should still be available for examination by the board and the public between intro and action, and we could actually show you some of these things ourselves.
I certainly would like that. Director Burke, Director Pinkham, and then Director Mack. And please recall, folks, it is 9:40, and we have a labor-close session after this meeting. Time check.
I will close with thank you. I learned more in this conversation than I did from the 800 pages of content that was provided. So I appreciate the work that went behind that, that came to this conversation. And then also just for, I recognize that this is, has the, the feel of an emotionally-charged conversation. The information that you have, that you've experienced, the deliberations of the committee, that was a closed process. So I got to hear the inputs, I got to read some of the materials, none of us got to hear any of the deliberations. And so, you know, we looked at the same inputs and came up with different outputs.
Yeah, and I too want to thank you for this process, and just be aware that I'm bringing forward concerns that I've heard and to have addressed, because it wasn't addressed in our handouts or anything, so that I'm not attacking the process or anything that was going on. I know we need a new science curriculum for, for the district, definitely, but some of my constituents had questions and concerns, and glad that you were able to address them and answer them, and hopefully now I'll get more feedback from them before we come to looking at, having a vote on this. So, you know, thank you for providing the answers for us today. Katia Yeo?
I just have one thing.
Please.
I would just like, as we're talking about our communication and all this stuff, it's like, I hope in the future, it doesn't take a bar amendment to have this conversation. I mean, I think questions can get asked in intro, that's what intro's for. If you're not satisfied at that time, then talk of an amendment, but I just think that this was sort of really jumping ahead of where it needed to go, so just want to make that statement.
We were days ahead of doing it on the fly from the dais, and we have paid hell for those unintended consequences in the past, so however it happened, I think we got lots of lessons to learn here, and I'm really grateful for them. Director Burke?
Because we're talking about timing, and I, you know, full transparency disclosure, this was discussed with staff at least a week before the amendment was submitted, with the intent of trying to understand, was it a viable thing? The, the fact that we didn't get that sort of rich feedback that we're getting now, the amendment turned into a vehicle for that. So my apologies if it created extra work. I think it was a fruitful conversation, though.
Director Geary, please.
I don't, I don't, I'm glad that it came out. I'm glad that we did it this way, as opposed to not. It really does highlight, I'm just going to underscore it once again, how difficult it is for the board to communicate outside of the public eye. It's, it's really, I think you just, the public would have to assume that we have rich conversations and that we all get to benefit from them, and that is not at all our reality. Our conversations around anything big and important have to happen in a group. We're unpaid, we're here on varying schedules, there's some for audit and finance, some for curriculum instruction, some for operations, some for exec. We, we don't get in the room. And so we even lose track of what concerns we've raised with who, maybe, in what conversation, what the answer was. It's very, very hard. So it does end up being a very duplicative, heavy, repetitive process to make sure that we understand not only the page that we're on, the page that you're on, and the page that our fellow board members are on. I, I just, I really want to underline how difficult and unsatisfying and stilting it is, and yet we still manage to work as a group for very little and a huge time commitment. So thank you again. I started with thank you to the board, I will end with thank you to the board.
Indeed, it's an honor, it's a privilege. This meeting is adjourned.